Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwine. Hey Greg.
Hello everyone. We're really glad you're here today.
We also have the incredible Julie and Colin from our team with us here today. Hey you guys.
Hello.
Hello everybody.
And a very special guest. Some of you may see a very familiar face here that you haven't seen in a while. We're so excited to have Chrissy Chen of Grow Workspace and all the other amazing things that she does. She's a team leader with Young Living. She's a coach to entrepreneurs. She's got a killer podcast. And she has a workshop coming up that she is here to share with you guys about today. So as you're coming in, let us know where in the world you are. And of course, what we're going to do here first is give Chrissy the floor. We're really excited to give you guys this opportunity to hear from her today. She's, you know, got just a couple of minutes to come in and talk about what she has coming up. If you are someone who is interested in making better use of your time in the way that you work, if you want to work smarter, I implore you to sit still for just a second and listen to what she has to say. Because what it is might change your life and the future of your business. So without further ado, I'm gonna switch over to speaker view Chrissy. Tell us what's up. Introduce yourself. Let us know.
Hello. I see some familiar names over in the chat. Donna and Sherry and Stacy. Hello Christina. I'm excited to be here and I'll make it short and sweet. Yeah, we've got the masterclass on the 26th. It's called How to Automate Your Business and Increase Your Revenue While You Sleep. Because doesn't that sound amazing, right? We want to be doing more of the things that we enjoy in our life. And so that means we need to be smarter about our business. We need to leverage automation. So some signs that maybe this is the time for you to think about better systems, automating some more things in your business, is if you're feeling overwhelmed with everything to do, if the to-do list keeps growing and growing, if you keep getting pulled away from your work to do other things like this week, let's see, all of the things, my child was homesick this week. So that pulled me away from work. We had an unexpected mold situation, which meant there were people ripping out my bathrooms and laundry room, literally like within 24 hours. That pulled me away. And we're in this launch phase and I wasn't even stressed because literally work is just everything set up and it's just going on behind the scenes. And so I'm like, you know what? I have time for this. I don't want to be doing this, but okay, here I am. And so if you're just feeling like life is constantly pulling you away, but there's things you want to be doing in your work, you want to be connecting more with people, you want to be learning more and all of that, and of course selling more, then this is the time for you to come. Join the masterclass. The topic is going to be relevant to you. I love it. No, although she signed up, Lisa's on here. Lisa will be there. And I just was catching up with some of our students, Lisa and Alan. And they were like, since we've automated, we have so much more joy. We're smiling more. Our marriage is better because we're not bickering about all the little business things to be doing. So it really is a game changer. So if you're feeling like, yes, I'm hearing this buzzword automation. I want things to work smoother, faster, more efficient, then I'd love to see you at the masterclass.
So Chrissy, this is a free masterclass, right? And just for folks who are here, that so that you're aware, when Chrissy's talking about automating and putting things to use in a smart way in your business, if you don't know this already, Chrissy and her team are pro Get Oiling users. So this is going to be very relevant to how you're using your Get Oiling system, right?
Yes, 100%. So I already see some familiar names or people that have been to the masterclass, are implementing what we teach, leveraging the things that we create for Get Oiling. So it's perfect. And literally just clicks of links and buttons and poof, these systems are in your platform. So it's just incredibly impactful for you and your business. And especially for direct sales, you know, Lisa and Alan, they're in Young Living and they're doing direct sales through that. And they also have a journaling business. So we, you know, working with them migrated the two together. How do we blend these together? So many of you out there are doing oils and you also do maybe Zito or Raindrop, right? Like, how do we work in a really efficient way so that you can be doing more of your services that you love and using that to sell more of your essential oils? So we love working with all of you that are on Get Oiling, that are in this Young Living space. So I'm excited to invite you all in.
Awesome. Awesome. You guys, that's get oiling.com/masterclass. We put that into the chat here. This is something you're going to want to make sure you're signed up for. And if you can attend live, you're going to want to. Now Chrissy, that's, you said this this coming Tuesday, right?
Yes, the 26th, 1:00 PM Eastern Time. Now I've blocked off two hours in my schedule to make sure we have plenty of time. I think I'm gonna get you guys out early. But yeah, I would block that time off. And if you have to jet early or the timing doesn't work, as long as you're registered, we'll send you the replay link and you can watch that. And you'll have about a week's time to watch that.
Fabulous. Thank you so much for coming out and sharing that with us, guys. I hope that you take advantage of this incredible offer. Chrissy is a leader in Young Living. She leads a team. She has her own business that she runs alongside her oils business. Some of you guys may be familiar with it. And she has others as well in sort of a portfolio of things that she runs while also being a mom of young ones and keeping it all going. So if you're ever gonna learn something about how to put smart work into play, this is the person you're gonna want to learn from.
Yes, 100%. And I will add little pro tip. Invite your team. Invite your other brand partners. Because here's the deal. As a leader, you often feel like you have to carry the weight, right? And this is how we really grow our direct sales businesses. You have to, you feel like you have to carry the weight. It's not about that. It's about working together. The more people, the more brand partners under you that you can get to create their own systems and automate their own business and really take it serious, the more you're gonna grow. So invite them to come with you and show up together and we'll have a great time.
Fabulous. That's right. Smart work can duplicate. All right. Thank you so much for coming out, Chrissy, and we look forward to seeing you on Tuesday.
Yes, thank you.
Hey guys, so I've got some slides prepared for you today. We have a couple of live work reviews scheduled. Yes, please make sure get oiling.com/masterclass. Sign up for that. It is free. Whatever you can learn that she's teaching, I encourage you to please take advantage of that because it is so valuable and she really knows what she's talking about. And that's coming from like everybody here. We agree. She knows what's up where it comes to Get Oiling, running a young living business and really doing all of the things right and well online. So today, we are going to be talking about, speaking of doing things right and well online, we're gonna be talking about how you can maximize one of our most popular plans at Get Oiling today. We are also going to be meeting with several folks who are here in our community. If you signed up for a live work review, if you do me a quick favor and come into the Q and A, just let us know that you are here and that you're ready. Then we will make sure just as soon as we get through today's quick training and walkthrough, we will get to your questions and pull you out to work together here on the call. So what we're gonna do now is actually hop out of video for the sake of our recording. And then we will get into these slides that I've created for you. So this is gonna be pretty brief and straightforward, you guys. Today we are talking about Get Oiling Basic. All right. So today we are talking about, again, this is one of our three most popular plans. That's gonna be basic, premium and pro. Those are the plans that are a dollar for your first month. Basic is a really great place to start if you are just kind of getting your toes wet with the idea of branding yourself, of having your own website, maybe even having your own courses or programs that you sell, private member area on your website. You've, you know that you love sharing Young Living. Perhaps you also have something else that is, you know, something complimentary that you do alongside. Like Chrissy mentioned, maybe you do Raindrop. Maybe you do wellness scans. Maybe you're an AFT practitioner, or maybe you have an entirely different practice or business that is complimentary to Young Living. If you're wanting to integrate that into the work that you do and tie your business under one roof holistically, the basic addition or basic plan of Get Oiling is going to be a great initial start for you because it has everything that we offer at our best plan levels, but at a low price to where if you are just getting started, it's really easy to just, to go ahead and start taking advantage of what's there. So today, we of course are going to be talking about the basics of the basic plan. We'll talk about how you can maximize your membership along with a sort of checklist of things that you ought to make sure that you do when you get started. We'll do a quick tour and demo of a Get Oiling basic plan. And then of course, we'll do our life help and Q and A. So if you are here and you are looking for help, please add your questions to the Q and A so that we can help you. As we move through the call, we do have Greg here who created this platform. We've got Julie and Colin here who are absolute masters of the system, who you may already know. If you reach out for help via email, do make sure you add those questions to the Q and A. This is a live session for us to help you move past anything you might be stuck with so that you can move forward in your business. Now, if you're watching this as a replay or in our Facebook group, you can go to get oiling.com/weeklyworksession to get on the list, to always know what's coming up next, to get exclusive invitations to workshops like the one that you just heard about from Chrissy earlier on the call. And then of course, to be the first to get replays and resources. And if you would like one-on-one help on a live call like we will be offering today, you can go to get oiling.com/web site review to sign up. It's completely free. And we will work together at the tail end of a call, just like this one, where we're live every week at noon Eastern US time on Thursdays. And if after you learn all of these things about Get Oiling, you'd rather have somebody set things up for you, we got you covered. Go to get oiling.com/concierge to learn more about our team and what they can do to help you. So if you're new here, you may or may not know that we have plans that start at $7 a month, but our most popular ones are actually a dollar to try out. And they have probably three times as many features. So for $29 a month, you guys, and that's a dollar for your first month, you get your contact manager. And this gives you the ability to tag or sort your contacts. You keep everyone you know organized in a way that makes sense to your business, your brain, the way you like to approach things. It allows you to systematize your to-dos, to keep notes, and keep up with all of the conversations you need to be having in this relationship-based business. Now, you also have the ability to import your virtual office file from Young Living into that contact manager so that you can manage how you stay in touch with folks, whether they are on a loyalty rewards program, whether they are not, whether there's someone who is having an oiliversary or whatever that might look like. You have the ability to import all of that data from your VO file and stay in touch with people in the way you want to stay in touch with them with automation at your fingertips. You also have daily reminders and contact activity monitoring. So our system will actually tell you what you need to do today, who you might need to follow up with today, based on something that you've told us previously, or based on something that your contact has done on your website, or if they've clicked a link in an email, et cetera. We also have, and this is really exciting, when you start getting into our basic and higher plan levels, you have a unique feature that you're not gonna find in any system across the board in the Young Living space, or to my knowledge, even in the direct selling space generally. And that is our digital upline coach, which gives you daily, weekly, monthly suggested actions that you can take in your business to improve your success, right? To improve your outcomes, to get more new customers, to keep them and to grow and duplicate your business. So we actually have a sort of gamified rating system where you can perform certain activities and you see your progress bar move. You've got a coach that shows up for you every day in your inbox, if you choose, with an encouraging message, encouraging you to do specific activities that will move the needle in your business. And you have the ability to connect your coach to another person's coach in Get Oiling so that you can stay accountable, viewing each other's activity in different areas of your business. Another thing that's unlocked at the basic level is the ability to have a private member area on your website. This is wonderful if you want to have a space off of social media where you serve your customers, where you serve your brand partners, or where maybe you serve your private clients, depending on what it is that you may or may not do outside of Young Living. You also have an app to use on the go that you can use to manage your business, send messages, edit pages, interact in your member area and more. And that app is also one that your community can use to access your private member area. This is something else that opens up for you at basic and higher plans. You have an events RSVP system with the ability to have people pay for events. So if you're doing a make and take, you can take payment. We have email and text broadcasts and campaigns, all-in-one systems. You know when you've sent an email to this person in your organization and whether or not they've opened and clicked a link in that email. We've got custom automations. This starts to unlock incredible time-saving potential in your system. Automations are something that allow you to have things that you know want to happen, happen without you ever having to think about them. You've set it up once and it works for you over and over again. We've got open and click tracking for when you send email and text. You can host videos with us so you don't have to keep them on YouTube or Vimeo or some other paid platform. You can import content from your favorite creators. You can go to our partners page to learn more in that list of folks who are offering content that plugs into your Good Oiling system is always growing. We have free live training, of course, every single week. We have our AI writer tools. So if you don't feel strong about writing marketing copy or writing great emails, then you have the ability to utilize our AI that knows your Young Living brand partner to help you write things like blog posts, emails and more. We have Zoom meetings. And this, guys, you're gonna pay, I mean, 50% at least of what you would be paying for basic on a monthly basis, is what you would be paying for Zoom. And you get all this other stuff that goes with it, right? You don't need Zoom if you have Get Oiling. We also have Leg Builder Links. So the Leg Builder Links are a really cool tool that you get to use to share your built-in Get Oiling website. So that's your compliance sharing website that comes with your Get Oiling system that everyone has. You can have a version of that that you maybe give to somebody who's interested in starting sharing, who's maybe not quite ready to invest in getting their own website yet. Resource bundles become available for you at this level as well, where you're able to literally duplicate your success by giving the things that are working for you to your team. So think newsletters, pages for the website, whole member area vaults, all kinds of great stuff you can share. We do, of course, have the Ready to Share Marketing Website that comes with your Get Oiling System, available to you at all plan levels. But at this level, at basic, you now have the ability to create your own custom website. So you don't need to go to a Wix or a WordPress or a Squarespace or any other type of place to have a website. You can have it right here, even if that website is for something that is not explicitly oily. You have the ability to brand it to exactly what you want it to be. You can use custom forms on your webpages to bring in information from leads and others. You can take payments on your website, whether that be for your member area, events or pages. You have landing pages available. You've got a blog and the ability to import another feed. So if you wanted the Young Living blog feed, for instance, to show up in your blog, you could do that here as well. We have Canva integration. You can use a custom domain. So it is yourname.com. Of course, as I hope many of you know, absolute world-class support with our team that answers your questions when you reach out, right? And all of that, you guys, all of it, literally for less than one bottle of Ningxia red per month. It's a mouthful, right? You could have drank a whole bottle of Ningxia in the time it took me to say all of that, right? So for less than one bottle of Ningxia, you get all of those things that you need to share, all of the tools that you need to go out there and share Young Living and work smarter. That's all it costs your business. And I mean, I'm sure all of us go through at least one, if not, I hope multiple bottles of Ningxia a month, right? So you're giving your business a bottle of Ningxia. Think about it like that. All right. So if you know that you love sharing Young Living and you want to get your feet wet with your own brand, your own website, your own offerings, things that you sell online, then basic is a really great place to start. Let's get into a little bit of a checklist here. Before I get into this, I don't think I made a slide that gives this distinction. You do have unlimited contacts at basic, and that is something that does open up from the basic plan and higher. But I typically do recommend if you are above silver and you have more than one active builder on your team, I typically do recommend looking at our pro or higher plans. But you can always, if you get started with basic, you can always, of course, once you realize that there's something that you need, where maybe you've maxed out your number of pages or automations, or you know, whatever that might look like for you, number of attendees on a Zoom meeting, then it is very easy to move up to that next plan level. Now, let's get into our basic checklist here. So first thing we want to make sure that we do, and this is something you're prompted to do when you get started with a basic plan with Get Oiling, is you want to set up your digital upline coach. Now, your digital upline coach, like I mentioned, is how you can stay accountable to the income-producing activities that your business needs. And you can connect with another person who also has a Get Oiling Digital Upline Coach to track each other's work together. So you can stay accountable to one another. So set this up first. Then, even though you can create a custom website with basic and higher plans, go ahead and add your story and photo to customize your built-in theme and use your built-in theme as your website until you have the custom website created that you really want. You also want to make sure, and this again is the same as what we shared for seed and starter plans on a previous training like this one, you want to make sure that your email signature is added so that every time you send a broadcast or a campaign, those emails or texts, or those emails specifically emails are signed by you. And then you want to consider going ahead and getting your own domain name so it's easy for you to share your website. And this is especially important because if you're going to get started and you want your website homepage to be yourname.com or yourbusinessname.com, that is something that you can connect to your get oiling.com/whatever that you set up when you got started and got your replicated website from Get Oiling. But then you could always modify, once you get that domain set up, where you want that to point, what you want that homepage to be. So if it becomes a page on your Get Oiling site, then you obviously can very easily change your homepage. And so long as you've got your own domain name, you'll always be able to send somebody to exactly where you want them to go, from your business card, from your social bios, et cetera. From there, you want to go ahead and play around with newsletters because that's one of the main things that we need to be doing, is staying in touch with our people on a regular basis. So you can import a newsletter from one of our incredible content partners. You can follow one of our trainings and create your own with one of our templates. But what you want to do is just use saved replies and create yourself a newsletter, just a basic. Here's a couple of links. Here's a couple of pictures. Maybe here's the link to the gift with purchase page on the Young Living website, et cetera. And feel free, of course, to use the AI writer, so our Write with AI feature and our Canva integrations to really make this great. So the next thing that we want to do is import our Young Living Virtual Office contacts. We're gonna schedule and send that newsletter that you created out to our team. We do have an entire dedicated training as well as a help article that walks you through step-by-step importing your virtual office file. And it actually talks about how you export your file from the Get Oiling Virtual Office, sorry, the Young Living Virtual Office as well. So if you're signed into Young Living, we show you where to go to get this file, and then of course, how you can add it into your Get Oiling system so that you can now communicate with your team. If you're going to be hosting events, which everyone should, at the very least online, go ahead and schedule your next event and create an event with your events manager so that you can share it and invite people to that event. In the meantime, as we should all be meeting and staying in touch with our customers, do that using Zoom if it's helpful, right? Obviously, you could always meet in person or use the phone. But Zoom is something that you have the ability to take advantage of here. Every time you communicate with your contacts, make sure that you are adding notes to their contact card in Get Oiling. Those contact cards are created when you import that virtual office file. You're gonna have a contact card for everyone who is a customer in your organization. So if you interact with them on social media, text, Zoom, phone call, what have you, you're able to go and add those notes to their contact card. And then going back again to this unsung hero of our system or saved replies, create those to house information that you share or plan to share often. If you, for instance, have a group, grouping of Facebook groups, or you know, there's a Facebook group, a Telegram channel, there's a YouTube channel, and then a link on your uplines website that has all of her monthly events, put all of those into one saved reply so that you don't have to go and find all 27 of those links when you are getting a new person started or reminding someone where all of this information lives, right? So start using tools like our saved replies to create miniature systems, right? And that is a mini system. What is something I do all the time? I share these five links. How do I normally share those five links? I go and I have to copy paste, copy paste, copy paste, copy paste. Okay, well, go copy paste into a saved reply. And now you've taken your system and you've made it smarter. Because now all you have to do is grab the saved reply, grab the saved reply, grab the saved reply. All those five, 10, 20 links, however many you have, are already there, right? And this extends to so many other cool things that you can do, sections of your newsletter, all kinds of awesome stuff you can do with this. So start doing that. Now, continuing with our basic checklist, once you've done those things, head over to the Brand My Business Workshop, right? That is gonna be something that you will be able to find in the Good Oiling Success Academy. I'll show you where it is in just a minute. But you want to go through the Brand My Business Workshop. If you are ready to brand yourself, create a website that looks like you and how you want it to look, how you want to show up online, you're gonna be able to go through a handful of quick modules here that will show you, using worksheets and real-life examples as well as templates, how to come up with the colors, the fonts, and even what to say. And from there, you can build your own, or you could take those things that you've created to our team and say, here are the colors I want, here are the fonts I want, here's what I want to say. Can someone build this for me? And of course, they can quote you on something, right? If you are interested in using social media or content to get new leads for Young Living, which we should all be focusing on doing to some degree, right? We're gonna be able to meet people in our local area. That's great. But when we're online, we want people to be able to find us too. So check out the Get Leads Course, also in the Good Oiling Success Academy. These are all free, by the way, to help you create a lead generating funnel so that you can have a free thing out there on your website for people to take advantage of. And of course, whoever takes advantage of that is somebody you can have a future oily conversation with. You'll also want to check out the Move Your Groups Course, again, also in the Good Oiling Success Academy, so that you can start creating a customer-serving group on your own website. You could also use this to create challenges. You could use it to create courses, whatever that might look like for you, where you can have your own private area where folks have to log into yourname.com to get in, get access and get the information that they are looking for. And then of course, with any of these things, if you dream up something and you would just prefer to hand it off to an expert, we've got you covered. You can go to get oiling.com/concierge and see what our team can do for you to help you get these things executed. So let's go check out a Get Oiling basic account and walk through some of these steps that I've shared with you. Allison says more like six bottles of Ningxia or so. Yes. It's easy to go through those quickly when you start getting your family onto it, right? And again, for the cost of, less than the cost of one bottle, you've got your whole basic plan for your system. So this is, we're logged into an account. Her name is Betty Basic. She's got a Good Oiling basic plan. You can actually see that we have a setup progress bar here where there are things that we would like for you to do to get your system set up. And there are even brief videos that will show you how to get those things done. And as you do some of these things, you don't even have to be told to do them. If you were to import or add your contacts, for instance, it's gonna check that off for you. So this isn't something that you have to pay a ton of attention to. But like if you're following other steps, like if you're using another guide that I've created for you or something like that. But do know that this is here, and it is a good idea to move this forward. Now, you will see on Thursdays that the weekly work session shows up here, but usually it's gonna look just like this when you log in. I want to draw your attention first to the Get Oiling Success Academy. That is right here. This is where you can learn about common projects, setting up your account. And this will actually show you, here are the things that we recommend that you get done. And this progress bar will move forward as you complete these steps. We have our online resources and tools. This is where that lead generation workshop I mentioned, as well as the We have our online resources and tools. This is where that lead generation workshop I mentioned, as well as the Brand My Business Workshop. And Move Your Groups off of Facebook, of course, Marketing Mastery and Email Marketing Mastery are also available to you here. So definitely make sure that you take a look at these if you are. Set up and you are interested in moving forward with making the most of what you have access to. I think going back to the the point that we've now made multiple times about the cost of Ningxia. And and the price of a good oiling basic account on a monthly basis. You are making the most of this system if you followed those initial setup steps. If you've gone into your settings and you have. Added your signature. Right? If you've gone into my story and photo and you've added your story and photo. You've imported your Young Living Virtual Office file. You've gone into your settings to saved replies and you've created yourself. A newsletter that you're going to send out on the first of next month, or you're going over to the Get Oiling homepage. To learn about our partners who actually sell resources that you can drop right into your account and use. If you are communicating with and keeping notes. On how you're communicating with your contacts from your virtual office on a monthly basis. You are making the most of your good oiling account. Because managing your relationships is the most valuable thing you can do. As a young living brand partner. Everyone is a relationship, everyone in your life, right? They are somebody who could be. An actual customer, there's somebody who could be a brand partner, or they could be somebody who could connect you to future customers. And brand partners that will work with you. So make sure that everyone goes into your contacts. Right? And that you are taking notes on those contacts. And then from there, start deciding on what your next project will be. So complete a website. Or complete a funnel or complete a member area. Don't have to do everything all at once. Don't need to do everything all at once because you you want to make sure that you are still spending your time. Doing the most important things, which really are staying in touch with your people. Now let's go down here to the Digital Upline Coach. When you got started, you probably saw. This setup here, this series. If you have not. Then follow through with what I'm going to show you right now. Now, the first thing that you want to consider was setting up your digital upline coach is how often. You are working your business. So what, how many hours per week are you working on your business? Be conservative about this. If you think that you work 10 hours. Start with the the five, go one level below. Because I think a lot of us find ourselves really busy with things that aren't income producing activities. And so I want you to see the wins, right? So whatever you feel like you are, go one below it. All right, just just as a way to start. So we're just going to go ahead and say five hours here. I'm not, you know, I'm building a side thing until I've got more time and space to devote to it. I'm just starting to grow my team. I don't have anybody who is actively sharing. So I'm going to go ahead and hit save and continue. From here, we can choose our coach. All of the advice is going to be more or less the same. And you're just going to be seeing a slightly different personality. So let's get baby boss here. I want a cute little baby telling me what to do, right? Cookies are for closers, better get scooting, right? So if if you like, have a sense of humor, pick one of the cute little cartoons like the baby or the. Or the unicorn, the sassy unicorn or the alligator. All right. So that's going to take you right here to your. To your dashboard for your digital upline coach, you're going to see all kinds of really great suggestions here for you. And of course, if you have completed anything, then you will see your progress move along. This is something that you're going to want to start looking at. Once you have imported your virtual office file, that is going to be a more important first step, of course. Because all of these things have to do with your contacts, right? So this is someone that you invited. To a to an event that you're having, or this is someone that you followed up with. So in each case. When you click it, you are going to need to enter the name of your contact here. This is going to update on that contacts card. So it actually eliminates an additional step there. And it also provides additional points here. So I'm just going to go ahead and save this, even though it's not attached to a contact. And you can see that that progress will continue moving ahead. And you can see the activities that you've performed. All right. So that is a really important thing. You want to make sure that you do and that you set up here. And then, yeah, from there, you've got a lot of different directions you can go. I think that where a lot of folks really like to start is creating their own homepage on their website. So first, again, can't recommend enough that you start with your Success Academy here. Head over to our resources and go to this Brand My Business Workshop. If you go here, you launch this course, this is free. You're going to get this is all for free, you guys. None of this is going to charge you anything. You can get in and get access to what you need to then go into your pages. And create an amazing website. Maybe even starting with one of the templates that we have here. So you could even use this as a starting point. This is one of the features that unlocks for you at basic, you have 10 pages that you can create. You can make them look however you want, whether it's simple or very complex. And you can even collect leads or take payment from these pages, which is really cool. So from here. We can maybe collect leads to offer a free guide in this case. Or maybe if you're selling something, of course, you would want to connect a payment processor. Which is one of our setup steps that we recommend from the Good Oiling Success Academy. But you have that ability here as well. I think that above all else, the most important thing that you should know if you're at basic. Is that your young living business. Thrives on your communication with your people. And even as you start to get more advanced in the technology that you play around with. Human to human interaction and actually reaching out one on one and communicating with people. Is never going to not be the most important thing in your business, right? So make sure that you are maintaining time for that. The Digital Upline Coach is a really great way to help keep you focused on those activities. And then pick one project, right? Website. Okay. Do the Brand My Business Workshop. Get your colors all figured out. If you find yourself stuck, head over to our Facebook community. Sign up for a review or just show up on one of these Thursday calls. Or of course, you can even see there are times where we have Pam, we actually have a live person who is often available. You can also, of course, reach out to our team via email, which is possible there as well. And you can get that help that you're looking for. And if you're wanting more strategic support, if you're looking for. You know, a guidance, right? So I think this is what I want to do, but I'm not sure that this is how I should do it. That is the perfect opportunity to go to get oiling.com slash website review. Sign up for live help on one of these calls. And we can talk through that together, like we will be here shortly with some folks from our community. So if you have questions, whether that's about the Get Oiling Basic Plan Level or anything else. Feel free to go ahead and add those to the Q and A. Remember that this plan level is a dollar for your first month. If you're thinking about getting started, it is absolutely my number one recommendation for anyone at any level. In get in Young Living, unless of course you are leading a larger team, at which point you might want to consider starting off. With with pro or higher. If you have questions about that, of course, you can reach out to our team. So let's see. Awesome. Hi Christina, I'm so glad you're here. Let's go ahead and bring you out. And we will. Talk through. What you need help with. Hi.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can.
Yay. How can we help? I don't know how to work. I don't know how to work it. Um.
Well, it sounds good.
Thanks. Um. I actually am a mess and I need help with a lot of things, but I'm going to narrow it down to the priority first. My website, I had been working on the page. I actually got it from Chrissy. I think, or maybe I got it from you. I don't know. I do both of y'all so much. But I need to not make my front page all Young Living. And so I have a template that's from. I believe Chrissy DDA, it's in my pages section that I was working on. And I need to be able to offer like a my favorites resource page on there, which. I took y'all's training, got your template and love it, but I'm not great at like. Putting things where they need to be and making it look really pretty. But then I also only have one thing because I had a blog posted I wanted to get out. And so I just have resources for that one thing right now, but I need it to be able to provide. Many different resources. So I guess we can start with that.
Okay, okay. I'm looking right now. For your account, so I can pull that up. Do you have a, what's, what's your website address?
It's Christina Hafselb.com.
Okay.
Didn't spell that last name for you.
No, 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 no. I'll be able to find you just fine.
It's my husband's fault, not mine.
Okay, here we go. All right. So this is a page.
I'm a mess. You about to see.
Love messes. All right. What's it called?
Okay, I think I don't know how to change the name. So when I imported it, what they about right there, Get Oiling DDA, yes.
Okay, let me show you first. How you can change that if you want to. Cute. Okay. So that's going to be right here. So this is the name. And this obviously does not need to be neither of these. So these are public. Okay? So neither of those need to say DDA, but let's also. We're just gonna, this is your about page, right?
I haven't even linked it to anything. I don't even have it out there yet.
Well, that's okay, but this is what it's going to be. It's about you, right? So let's just go ahead and name it. Yeah, let's just name it. So. Okay.
I'll make that one too easy.
Oh, so here's what I did. We did a, we did a tech tips call a while back. I highly recommend you checking out. I have a whole list of keyboard shortcuts that I put on there. So I just typed in about Christina. I'm on a Mac, but this is the same on a on a PC. On a Mac, I hit Command C. On a PC, you would hit Control C. And I copied this and then it was Command V or Control V for paste here and here done, right? So the keyboard shortcuts will make you super speedy. Okay. So what are we looking for here?
Okay, so that's not my, I just started putting things in where I thought it was supposed to be, but it's probably not even in the right spot. And I really don't know what I'm doing with all those pages.
Okay.
But I, my, if you look at my, my website, it's actually really y'all's in the box website. And then I have like. I moved what I wanted over there and created that because I'd rather it be that page than what it is right now. Because it's got a lot of, and I want get, I want a Young Living stuff on there. I just want it like in tabs across the top for options. And the page be more about me.
Yeah, absolutely.
You can see where I took that information and put it over on this other file too. So I really want that other thing that I created about me to be the front page. But then there's nothing else there. So I was like, do I do that?
Yeah, I know you. You absolutely can. What you would be doing is just modifying your menu. So that your menu sends them to the different places you want them to go. So if you want your menu. To send them to this go beyond green, this built in theme, you can do that. Right? You know, if you want them to, you know, learn more about green living, then this can be the link that we send them to. From from your menu where you know, this would be the published page. So if this is your homepage, for instance. Let me go hit view here. So yeah, if this is, if this is your homepage. We'll just pretend, then one of these items up here could be. Learn and then under learn, here's, you know, green living, right? Here's immune support. Here's this or that, right? So yeah, okay. So so yeah, that's that's doable. Essentially what you would be doing is creating the page. That you want to be your homepage, setting that as your homepage. And then using the menu, which let me go back over here, using the menu here, which you have done some modifications to. Yeah, use the menu here to send people to wherever you want them to go.
Okay, okay. So. I have that one and I just, and I honestly don't know how I did that. I was messing with it one night. And I did get one link up there at the top of the menu for my resources. I don't think I want that there. I think I want it in a dropdown tab. You see my favorite things. There it is. And there's not much there. It was literally, I needed to make it so that I could put this blog post out so that I could give the my mommies. Links. So.
Okay.
I don't think it like goes there. But I want, I have it attached to a blog post, so I don't want to like make it to where when people click on the blog post, it's not there.
So I don't really. It's still there. It doesn't have to be in your menu to live on your website. So if I remove this from your menu right now, I'm going to save it. And we can go look at your blog post and you'll see, and actually it's. It's a good idea to create those sort of rabbit holes where people aren't going to find everything on the homepage. We want to send them in a direction that fits with their interest. And then they get that sort of mental satisfaction of clicking and discovering something new. So it's better to create tunnels for people than it is to just go kind of wide. And shallow with here is everything right here. We can just say, hey, this is who I'm here for. Here are some things. Would you like this, this? And then they'd go here and then they can dive in, right? So if we go to look at your, your blog. So if we go to. Blog. Which one of it, was it this one?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. The Halloween one.
Okay. Yeah. So when we go here. My favorite things, the page is still there. It doesn't have to be up here in the. In the menu.
I can be taught, I promise.
Well, yeah, clearly you've been doing a lot of good work.
Oh, you're so sweet. Thank you. Cause I feel like a mess. I'm like, why don't I have this together? Like I should have this together by now.
No, no, this is. No, this is not something that 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 we were born to figure out all of us, like this is. You're building a website, like. Think about that. You are building a website. You didn't go to school for this. You go training for this. You do other things that you care about. So it's okay to not be 100% on top of having this figured out. If you're doing it yourself, you know, if the prerogative is to get it done more quickly. We got options for you, but if you're enjoying the process of, what's that?
I'm all for the options of getting it done quicker for me. I think I'm going to reserve that concierge thing you talked about. Cause I also, there was one other thing and I don't want to take up everybody else's time. So. I am, I do the with Martha Kreske, I do the jumpstart and I know that she got with Greg to build a template for that. I would love to figure out how to get that on the front of my website. Because when I'm talking to businesses, I don't have an easy place to get them the information.
Okay, so is the information about the jumpstart on a page?
No, I haven't. I don't know where it's at yet. I've just seen other people that have it. It's that is, no, that is just want to send out to businesses, but I don't have a. An actual, I need to create it is what I'm saying. I need to create something that that. People, when they go to, because I'm talking to people about it, but then they go to my website that's linked and there's nothing about it on my website. So I guess. And I believe that she said she had talked to Greg about building something on that. I don't.
Okay, I'm not super familiar with it, but the jumpstart is that you're put, are you putting them into a Facebook group?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what you would be doing or what's, well, actually real quick and. We may not be able to go into the full depth of this, obviously, because that's a strategy that y'all have. But but when you are going to bring someone into this jumpstart. What are you getting for them in exchange? You're getting their name, email or like, I mean, are you just putting them in there? What is, what does that look like? Do they have to sign up for Young Living first?
Yes, they, they get the, they get a link I send them to that explains the program. And then they let me know they want in. And once they want in, I let them know what the the juice that they need to purchase, which is the needs to red get.
Okay, perfect. So then what you would do is you would either create a landing page or a page. I would. I would recommend doing a page for this because you have a custom form, right? So if we go and create a page. Where let's, let's just go create one here. We'll pretend that this is it. And this is going to be, you know. Join the 11 day jumpstart. And then you put some information here about what it'll do for you, right? You talk about, you know. Here's, here's, you know, this person had this happen, right? So you're kind of selling it, right? And then what you're going to do is under settings and this is what's going to pop up when somebody clicks this button here, which is going to say. I want to join or something like that. You modify what comes up in settings here under leads. And this is where you can get their name, their email, their phone. But then you could also get other information. So you know, I am interested in. Weight loss, in hormone balance, in healthy pets, healthy kids, whatever. And you can actually make the. weight loss, in hormone balance, in healthy pets, healthy kids, whatever. And you can actually make those, you know, a list where they can pick multiple things. If you wanted to do something like that. So if you want to kind of make like a, an application to get in, or if you want to, however you want to frame it, if you want to gather information from them that you can use to close, to seal the deal, then, then you would be using a form like this, where you could ask them questions and then they have to fill those, uh, those fields out. Uh, and then you would attach a campaign here that would, um, maybe say, you know, reply with your, you know, the best two times we can talk, or maybe it's your link to go purchase Ningsha or sending them to a page or whatever, whatever that might look like. Um, and then this page that you create that's talking about this jumpstart, you could put this in your menu or both. Uh, you could also put it, uh, put a section about it on your homepage.
Okay. Okay, that's a lot of, oh, that's good information. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. You're, you're basically creating a funnel for it.
Perfect. I appreciate it. Thank you, Ashley.
Yeah, you're doing great work. You're not as big of a mess as you think.
Thanks.
Okay, um, I think, and would totally understand because it's like 2:00 AM there. Has anybody heard from Anna Connie? She was signed up for a work review today. And Anna Connie, if you're here and you are under another name, then definitely let me know. All right, Lisa says, uh, I'm trying to create a blog subscription and I'm struggling with what to put on the page. Lisa, would you like to come out and chat? Raise your hand for me if so, and we can, we can talk through that together. Hey, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm probably doing all of this backwards, but I'm starting with my blog. So I haven't done a whole lot on my website. I did get a, um, custom domain name. And I launched my blog a couple of weeks ago and then I had somebody say, ask me, you know, is there a way we can get notified when a new blog comes out? And I'm like, oh, I kind of assumed that just happened. So I need some help. I have no idea. Like I found the instructions on how to do it, but I have no idea like what to even put on the page or I'm, I, I, there weren't really any examples to look at. And I'm a visual person. Um, so I could use some help creating that.
Yeah, okay. So this is actually a really simple funnel that you can create. And it could be as simple as just using a landing page here and using a campaign on the other side of it. So I always like to create the campaign first. Uh, because that is something that you need to complete the funnel. So if we'll just, you know, we'll create a campaign here that is called blog updates. So subscribe to, uh, blog updates is what we'll name it. Do you text or are you focusing on email?
Generally email.
Okay, so we'll put email preferred here. We'll create the campaign. And this is just going to be a confirmation message and you can go back and change this at any point. So, um, you're subscribed for blog updates. Uh, and so we'll personalize the message and sell, tell them hello. Um, so glad you're here. Here's some of what you can expect in future updates, you know, topic. Et cetera, right? And then you could say, here's some of, um, our readers' favorite post. And then you could actually link to some of your blog posts here. And then maybe if you want to say, uh, want to, I don't know. So if, if you have a Facebook group, if you are on social, like here are some other ways we can connect, right? So here's some other ways we can connect. What do you want to learn about? Hit reply and let me know, right? So you always want to be asking for engagement. Uh, alright, so now that we have that and that's it, that's all we need to send. Hey, you're signed up. Because what they'll be getting is a regular email from you when you publish. So, um, so now that we have that, we can just create a simple landing page. And this will be one to subscribe to the blog. Oh, look. Looks like you might have done that.
I have no idea what to do now.
Okay, got you. Yeah, so.
I don't necessarily, is, are phone numbers, like is that essential to, I'm, I'm worried about that feeling invasive for people. Can that be optional if they're just signing up for my blog? Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Here, let's use this one here. Uh, and this.
How did you do that? How did you do that? Oh, you went into the options?
So I went to, we're creating a new one for you. And then these are, yeah, these are the ones that, that are available to you.
Yeah, I did see that and I just, I got lost there.
Yeah, that's okay. That's okay. So here we'll just get really simple and we'll say subscribe to the blog. And how often do you, um, do you put up blog posts?
Weekly.
Okay, so be the first to get access to my weekly blog posts. Alright, um, keep me in the loop. And then here, we will subscribe me, you know, you could obviously change this. Um, and then you, you called it life after loss.
After loss with Lisa.
Love it. Awesome. Great. And then here, let's just do a quick, um, uh, we want to do a logo because it's square. We'll just use Canva here. And we'll search for blog and find a photo like maybe I, I don't really like these that much. So, um, we'll put reading. Hi, how about this? Okay, so, um, we're going to set that as the background image. And I actually think I want to flip this because I want her to kind of be looking at the form.
Oh.
Right? So let's send that to Get Oiling.
And can you show me quickly how you linked that to Canva?
Yeah, so what I did was I went to replace the image and then there's a Canva button.
Okay, okay.
Yep, just make sure you're signed into your Canva account. So now under settings, we're going to go find our blog updates campaign. And this will be, uh, blog updates. Uh, and we'll also make a tag blog updates.
Campaign was the first thing that you created, right?
That's right. That's that one message that we created. Mm-hmm. That tells them that they're subscribed. Um, let's give them a message after registration. So thanks for signing up. Be on the lookout for an email from me uh, confirming your registration. I look forward to meeting you soon. There we go. So this is where we can choose to even not show phone.
Okay.
Right? So if you wanted it to just be name and email, which if it's blog updates, I think that's preferable.
Under the settings on the landing page, right?
Mm-hmm, that's right.
Okay.
Yep. And, and that's it. So, um, we'll make this a little bit larger and maybe center it. And hit done and save. And now you can share this. Right? And we've got our, hit this here. And then the other thing that you might consider doing is putting this into the sidebar of your blog. So if we go over to down here to our blog posts and then to our blog settings.
Yep.
Under personalization.
Yeah, I watched the whole blog, the, one of the first blog on YouTube, uh, that you guys did. Um, was looking at all of that and learned so much about, oh, that's what that is. I had no idea what some of the stuff is. I'm so new to this.
Hey, that's, that's great. Learning new things is fun. Awesome. So, uh, so here we'll put in, um, subscribe as our call to action. And then we'll copy this link. That'll be where we send them. And we'll update that and save it. And then we can go view your site. And then we can go to blog. And so now that's linked right here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Of course you could also put that down, you know, at the bottom of your posts, et cetera, you know, just wherever you'd like to have it.
Right. I did do the, um, uh, find me on Facebook and Instagram and linked my two socia's on there. Um, so now that that's set up, what do they get for emails? Like, how do they get notified? How, what, is it emails that I need to then create or are they auto-generated?
Yeah, so when you release a new blog post, there is a way to automatically notify people directly from here. So let's just go to this one that's scheduled and use that as an example. Um, if you would like to go down here and, um, let's see, we're going to go down here to advanced options. Here we go. Um, where would that be? Where's that auto send? Or is that maybe on other plan levels that I'm missing? Okay, um, there are, there are ways to send it out automatically. That's not generally my recommendation though, because what's going to happen is, um, is you're going to, you know, you're, you're not always going to be sending them exactly the best verbiage to get them to actually go to your website. Cause what we want people who subscribe to read what you wrote, the better strategic move is to get them to leave, to click a link from the email, leave the email and go to your website and spend time there. That's going to be better for your website long-term. It's better for your email send score and reputation long-term. So what you would do is once you have this post, so I can actually just copy this link here, and this is set to publish on the 13th at 8:00 AM. So we're going to go over, uh, to our dashboard. And we're going to schedule a message. So this is going to be one message. It's going to go out to the tags, blog updates. And we're going to schedule that. You know, for the 18th at 8:00 AM. And then this is where we'll say, you know, whatever your subject line is, and then you would say whatever the verbiage that you want to put in here, whatever copy you want to use, and they would say, read the post. Right? And then you would make this a link to that blog post.
So I'd have to do that for every, for each blog post. Okay.
Yeah.
I, I didn't know if there was a way to automatically like, so, um, okay.
Sorry, I don't, I realized that, that that probably wasn't sharing. So let me, let me just show you what I did here real quick. Yeah, yeah. So you go right here. And then we're going to filter for blog updates, right? So blog.
Okay.
Updates. And those are the people who signed up on that landing page we just created. And we're going to schedule an email to go out to them. The date and time. And then I've actually hyperlink this read the post, but then you can go in here and say whatever it is that you want to say. So yeah, it, it is an additional step. Uh, but it is, um, it's generally a more effective move, uh, to do that to, um, you know, to have you write your blog post, but then your email to your list that goes out once a week. Uh, it needs to be something that is a little bit more, a little bit more than the blog post, right? Because we don't, like, if, if we're giving them everything in the email, we're not giving them a reason to go to the website. And we are missing an opportunity there to get them to click and go to the website.
So would you suggest, because I know there's a way to, um, and I don't remember what it's called, but I know there's a way to do, um, oh, it's something, I think it ha, it's something about a summary of the blog post or, yeah, see if I can find it. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, you can use AI to do that. Uh, that's going to be right down here under your blog post. Uh, and it's going to be, um, right down here. You can click here to create an auto summary.
Right, okay.
And of course, you, you can modify it.
And put that in the email?
Potentially. I would consider copying this and then maybe going in to write with AI. Uh, and maybe asking it to give a specific tone, um, give a call to action, et cetera. Or, you know, you could also just read it and say, okay, how can I make this sound more like me? Right? Uh, but this excerpt, it's a great place to start. I love how it, it's able to do that. It's a starting point though, in my opinion. Uh, and then under advanced options, you would use, uh, that excerpt. So you would go down here and you would actually show an excerpt. So actually go ahead and pop this in right here. Oops, that's actually not, not it at all. But you would take that, the excerpt that we generated from up here, uh, and you could pop it in down here. And then even, you know, when folks are scrolling uh, through your blog posts, they aren't receiving the entire blog post right here. They're just going to see the excerpt and then they have to click to open, which again is strategically a better thing for you to focus on because you're getting people to kind of spend more time on your website, to click more links and to kind of tunnel into more opportunities.
More posts than just the, like, the one might fill up the whole page and then they're done, but if that's more than that. Oh, that makes so much sense. Okay. Okay, thank you so much. I, I'm going to re-watch this so I can catch all of the steps that you did. I was trying to write as you were doing it, but thank you so much. That's so helpful.
Absolutely. And definitely do check out, uh, we do have several trainings on, on sort of setting up and branding the blog as well as, um, as one about like monthly newsletters. Uh, and that would be a great kind of follow-up to how you are communicating with the people who opt into your blog.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you so much for coming out. It's so great to, uh, great to chat with you. Alright.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, we have one more question from, uh, from Allison. Uh, before we go, and thank you guys for sticking around. I knew we're going a little long today. Allison says, I have an elderberry event on my events page, but I just created a Canva flyer for it. And another one for my RC facials next week. I haven't gotten the RC facial event on the events page yet. How can I use this with my Get Oiling emails funnel? Or would that be too much and the events page is enough? So the events page is enough to answer your question most succinctly, but the way that you could go about utilizing these, um, these flyers that you've created, um, would be to maybe pop them into an email campaign, right? So if somebody RSVPs, you're sending them the flyer that reiterates the information. Uh, if the flyer is something that's legible, that could be used as the featured image for the event, then you could 100% do that. But you just want to make sure that it looks right, like it can be read from, from the screen. And then of course, use it on social media, which is really the best place to employ graphics like that, that have text, is to put them on social media so that you can really be, you know, just like you'd be plastering flyers around a neighborhood, plastered around your virtual neighborhood. And of course, make sure that you're sending them over to your website to RSVP. So thank you for that question. Thank you guys for all of your amazing questions and for your attention. Uh, today, we will be back here same time next week. Make sure you sign up for Chrissy's masterclass. That's getoiling.com/masterclass. And we will see you on an upcoming training. Take care, guys.